The Monday, September 12th, 2022 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal, here. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here, thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Motion to accept the agenda as written.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements this evening. Moving on to boards and committees, we have one. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this appointment? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we appoint Peter Felsman to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 6/1/2025.
And do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
Second, Your Honor.
Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion?
None, other than that, I think we're continuing, you know, to fill out some of these volunteer boards and committees in the city, which is really exciting, especially those that have had vacancies for a while, and I really appreciate Mr. Felsman's service to the city.
Pro Tem?
Nothing further.
Any other Commissioners, discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our first public comment of the evening. Members of the public wishing to speak have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address and approach the center podium. Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Carol Manning. I live at 526 Brookstone Circle, and that's a part of the Harlow Farms Conservation Community. I'm here to speak to the issue of a multi-use path along Wilson Street. I'm talking about the section of Wilson Street from, that runs from M553 to US 41. As you know, this section of the street was developed originally by the Harlow Farms Development Corporation and later transferred to the city. At the time it was transferred, there was an agreement between the city and the corporation that the city would put in a multi-use pathway along the right-of-way of that section of Wilson Street. Since that time, there's been considerable development in the neighborhood. In fact, the Harlow Farms project is nearing completion. Most of the homes have been built. There are about five that are currently in progress of being built and a number of are in the planning stages. So you can imagine that that has added to the number of people living in the area at the same time. At the same time as that, the Mill Creek Assisted Living Facility has added 26 new units to their independent senior living community, also adding to the population in that area. We're an active community, largely made up of retired folks, although we do have some new young families with little kids that we're happy about. But we're active and we walk a lot. We have a number of residents who bicycle on a regular basis. And we have some real concerns about what's happening along Wilson Street with regard to safety issues. We see that there are a number of folks who use wheelchairs, who use walkers or other assistive mobility devices, and we all use that Wilson Street corridor to access facilities and to access the trails. There's a lot of reasons why a multi-use trail would be an asset to the city in that area, connecting it to other trails. The Heritage Trail does cross Wilson Street within that same area. But the two points that I'm here really to speak to tonight are, first of all, as I mentioned, the longstanding commitment. I would ask that you consider honoring that commitment. It's been over 10 years since it was originally made. And I understand that there are significant budget constraints that the city is facing right now, but I also believe that this commitment is long overdue. And secondly, of course, the safety issues. When you have people who are walking, people who are bicycling, wheelchairs, assistive mobility devices using the same roadway as buses, large-
Manning, that's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to note that our chance to respond is at the end of the meeting during Commissioner-
Thank you. I do have summary of concerns if you would like for the record.
If you want to hand it to the City Clerk, he can distribute that to the Commission. Thank you, Ms. Manning. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Angela Rayhorn. I live at 1025 Second Street. I have two separate comments I'd like to make today, and I think I might have to do my second one at the end, and neither of my comments have anything to do with recent emails I've sent. The first one, I attended last night with my husband, the presentation on sextortion at Kaufman Auditorium. And I attended as a parent, but I also attended as an educator in the community. And I think, as someone who felt like I was pretty informed and having regular conversations with my own children about this, there was a lot of surprising information in the film that we were able to see. And I thought it was amazing and tragic that Marquette would be, according to the producer, one of three places in the country where they've had a private filming before it's been officially released. One of the comments that really hit me was from a family who was very close to the person that we lost in our community last March, and he was expressing his concerns about the things that students at Market Senior High School are trying to do to honor this student and remember him, and how it's not allowed. And I actually made a comment after that, and I said, I realize it's so complicated. This is probably something for the school board or the city commission. But I also compared it to, when I moved here in 1996, I was a sophomore from Indiana, and that school year, we had four boys in our class killed in a car accident on their way to a basketball tournament on a Saturday morning. And I know the city, or actually, I don't know. I know there are trees planted in their honor. I know because my daughter does band now, I didn't realize this. I didn't know any of the boys that well because I was new to Marquette, that there is a scholarship, and Dr. Ludwig, every spring honors one of these students who was apparently very involved in band as well, and, you know, remembers his name. And I know that's all related to the school, but I'm also wondering and hoping to get the ball rolling with the city commission because I haven't personally been able to talk to the people who made the comment and are struggling, and their kids are struggling, and they don't understand why things are taken down and why things aren't allowed. What or if anything the city can do to raise awareness generally? Because again, as someone that tries to be very informed about these kinds of things, I have a 17-year-old and a 14-year-old and a 12-year-old. And my husband and I talk about all the time, we're parenting in a situation that we didn't grow up in, like online access and all kinds of things. What the city commission thinks they could do to raise awareness or to potentially honor or remember this particular student from MSHS, or work with the school board in that way, and that is my first comment.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. L.R. Swadley, 135 Hidden Springs in Marquette. I'm the president of Harborview Development Corporation and a longtime community developer here in the market area. And I came here tonight to basically report that Harlow Farms Conservation Community is essentially done. And that's been 17 years. I like to round down my age, too. And actually, there are Fred here and Suzanne, of course, and that older gentleman, Dennis, in the corner there. You know, the only ones probably have any memory of when we first started this. And at the time, it was the largest PUD contract the city had done. Of course, the hospital trumped that. So Harlow Farms, it was 105 acres that we developed and with a master plan. And we have finished two residential neighborhoods of 84 lots. There's only one lot left for sale. There is a significantly large senior housing component of Mill Creek Assisted Living, Memory Care, two independent living neighborhoods. We have two condominium neighborhoods and a rental component. On top of that, there has been, we created and set aside 26 acres of conservation lands, which we built and enhanced trails. And all-
Here's a cigarette butt, and I hadn't planned on picking it up. 37 minutes later, I got back in my car. Your municipal service center had four or five locations where ashtrays had been dumped. And this is unacceptable to me because right up the street is the Board of Light and Power that has two buckets that are ready, willing, and able 24/7 to accept an ashtray. You don't have to be a resident of the city. But as a taxpayer, we paid a fortune for a damn fine-looking municipal service center, and to have that much debris in a parking lot gives the wrong impression. And I know you didn't know this, and normally I would have sent it to you privately, but like I said, I'm venting tonight because that was 37 minutes of my life I'm never going to get back. In the meantime, I'm also going to do something that I don't want to do, but I think I'm kind of frustrated past the point of tolerance. I'm going to start naming names in terms of the locations in the city that are the garbages, full of the most garbage. And the one that's driving me absolutely crazy because it's in the healthcare business is Walgreens out on the highway. The last time I went there, I always plan on 30 extra minutes in the Walgreens parking lot because it is notorious for cigarette butts. That particular trip, cigarette butts were the least of my problem. There was medical waste in the parking lot. Used Band-Aids, dental picks. I hate dental picks. I hate them. I don't want to look at them. Q-tips and other things that don't belong anywhere on the ground, let alone in what is arguably a healthcare thing. I filled out the form to report the store for not having, I mean, this was ridiculous. They also have a piece of rebar that's about waist-high that anybody walking in that area could impale themselves on. And I'm not exaggerating. I've got pictures and everything. So Walgreens, do a better job. Or people, don't shop there. Because if you keep shopping there and saying the filth is acceptable, they're going to not clean it up. Somebody's got to clean it up because I'm not picking up medical waste. I draw the line at some things. And so that's me venting. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the Commission. We'll start things off with Pro Tem Mayor.
You know, I think I just have some interesting luck with this because every time it's my turn to go first, I genuinely don't think I have anything to comment. Thank you, though.
Yeah, Commissioner, come on.
Thank you. Great conversation about the water rates. And for folks, we had a work session?
Special meeting.
Special meeting, so it was recorded?
It was recorded, yeah.
Thank you. We had a special meeting to talk about our water rate situation. And I strongly encourage folks to watch the video. It was a very good presentation. We are changing how we allocate future increases in costs and doing it in a way so that if you use less water, you don't have to pay more. It's going to be allocated. And so the increases look like they're going to be less than what we had projected. And I want to publicly call out the staff and the consultants who really helped us, took a hard step back and really rethought the process, and I want to thank them for that. And while there still are going to be increases, it is less than we had originally projected because we're going to spread things out more over time. We, I know there's going to be comments about the carts coming later, but I did get to see the enormous trailer full of big blue carts coming through my neighborhood tonight and that I am excited to have an easier way to recycle coming next week. And then in terms of upcoming events, before we have our next meeting, I was desperately looking. There's a, Peter White Public Library is going to have a special banned books event coming up, and I lost the date, but I know it's sometime next week. And I think it's in the spirit of having good conversations and keeping people informed. We've been heard about that tonight, making sure that people are engaged and informed in this conversation about banned books and helping understand that we need to perhaps broaden our understanding of the world, not narrow it. I'm looking forward, I'm going to be participating in that, reading a book that's been banned that's important to me. And coming up, another public input session. The Michigan Public Service Commission will be at NMU's Northern Center on September 21st, taking public comment about our electric rates. And I will note that the Marquette Board of Light and Power has a separate board of directors and is not directly regulated by this group, many other people. If you have Upco as a customer, or if not here, you don't here in the city, but maybe you have a camp. Also, the Upper Michigan Energy Resource Corporation, formerly We Energies. This is a unique opportunity. We're going to have the leadership of our regulatory commission here in Marquette, all three of them, and a chance to talk about our coming energy changes. And the day before that, on the 20th, there's going to be special sign-up. We heard about the low-income water assistance programs in the previous meeting. There are many low-income heating assistance programs, and there's going to be special opportunities to sign up for that at the Farmers Market on September 20th. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two quick items. Kudos to Harlow Farms. When you think of what they built out there, and if you've ever been there before they built it, I think you would be amazed at the product that's come out of it. A residential community built right in the city of Marquette as a separate entity. And that's remarkable. If you haven't driven through it, if you haven't looked at it, I think you should do so because it really does stand out. And we do need to look something, look, City Manager, I think, at the issue with the multipath and see how that all fits in and what we can best do with that. No promises made, but obviously, we can take a good look at it and hopefully do what we should be doing. Your Honor, thank you.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, with regards to the multi-use path proposal over on Wilson Street, I really appreciate those folks that came to share your concerns and your thoughts with us. You're not the first or only people to reach out to me at least with similar ideas. And I know I've had a couple conversations and communications with the City Manager about that already. But I think, hopefully, as Commissioner Stonehouse said, there's something we can do, even given our significant budgetary constraints right now. But also, I think this is a reminder of how moving forward, we really need to plan from the very beginning for pedestrian safety. And I think as we move into our community master planning process and we start seeing a lot of renewed engagement with our traffic and parking advisory committee, for example, a lot of new members joining, that's something that we should have front of mind. With regards to the comments that were made about trying to get more civic engagement in the community, especially from young people in Marquette. It probably doesn't come as a surprise to anybody, but I couldn't agree more. I was kind of nodding my head a lot and as Ms. Rayhorn was speaking there, I think it'd be great to have some kind of civic engagement or community club or program in our local elementary schools. And some folks might know that I've been trying to work for the past almost three years now to get a youth commission established at more of the secondary level in our high school or maybe middle school level with the city to try and get some more young folks involved in city government and educated about how city government works and make a real tangible difference in the community. Hopefully, that's something we can do in the relatively near future. But I also think that the comments that were made more broadly about folks sometimes, you know, feeling a little blindsided or not knowing what's going on in the community and maybe not feeling the city government is being transparent enough or responsive enough, or like their voice isn't necessarily being heard here in City Hall. I just want to, first of all, say that those are valid and understandable feelings. And secondly, that I think, especially as we move, again, into our community master planning process over the next year, this is the time. If anybody who's watching this meeting or is in this room right now has at some point over the last five or six years said, hey, what the heck, why is the city doing this or doing that? Usually, the answer at the end of the day is probably that it's because of what our master plan says we should be doing. So now is the time to get involved with that. Your voice really can make a difference, more so than showing up to any individual meeting. Showing up to those community engagement meetings, those community engagement opportunities with the master plan is going to be really critical in helping, you know, make sure that everybody's voices are heard, that we have a master plan that represents the priorities of folks who live in our community. And also, a master plan that's going to address some of these problems we were talking about tonight, whether it's pedestrian safety or civic engagement or city budgets and infrastructure, housing, things like that. So childcare. So your voice does matter, and I hope people stay involved and especially engage in that community master planning process over the next year. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I see Mr. Swadley has left, but I do want to add to the congratulations on building a very important and very lovely part of our community. And there was a lot of insight about the needs of the community for some of our vulnerable populations and some of our healthy populations. And just what a wonderful mix of housing that that whole 17-year project has brought to our city. And I appreciate Carol coming to talk about that multi-use path because I do recognize how many people are using that in a pedestrian way. And as we look at different modes of transportation, whether they're recreational or for essential services, how that bike path would be a very important connection to a lot of our other trails, to shopping for groceries even. So I hope that we are able to take a look at that and move forward, not knowing really what was in that agreement. I don't, you know, as Commissioner Stonehouse said, we can't promise anything right now, but we certainly can take a look at it and see what we can do. I also want to recognize the Planning Commission and the staff in the Planning Department. And they had a lot of publicity last week. And so it is a good time to acknowledge the talents that they bring to our city. These are, the commission is a group of volunteers, and the amount of information that they need to have in their head, the knowledge that they need to serve on that committee and the amount of information they have to process in order to make the decisions is pretty phenomenal. I just want to say thank you to the Planning Commission and also thank you to the planning staff that helped them through that whole process. And I will echo Commissioner Bonzal's comment about, please, let's get the community involved in the master plan because that's a great deal of why they make their decisions. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I want to spend most of my Commissioner comments talking about something that is affecting the majority of, well, all city residents in the coming weeks, which is the blue carts. I have my garbage night tonight, and I checked with staff to make sure that I do it right. I put both of my carts, my garbage and my recycling, out tonight. They'll both be emptied, and I believe a blue one will be dropped off tonight. I bring all three back to my house this week. I fill up the blue one as the week goes on. And next week, on my recycling night, I bring all three carts out. The full blue one, my full garbage one, and the empty green recycling bin. And that one gets picked up that night and taken away, and then I continue to just have my two carts. If you don't have a cart, obviously, this makes it a lot simpler for you. But that is for the people that have carts, like I do. That is the way that you will return the carts, so you don't have to be confused by how that works. I would like to comment on Ms. Rayhorn. I think a youth commission is something we absolutely need. I know it's something Evan has pushed for over and over again, but there are a lot of, I knew exactly zero about city workings when I was in high school. And I think it would be wonderful to know that when it comes down to it, the decisions we make tend to affect you significantly more than the decisions that get made in Congress, by the President, and things like that. We affect everyone's day-to-day lives. And so knowing how this runs when you're young and understanding how to become a part of it is something that I think we should be furthering. And I would be all for helping to start a youth commission so that we can educate the youth in our area. And then if they stay, they know here, or if they move up, they know in other areas how this works. Other than that, banned books week is the 18th through the 24th. Thank you.
I already did. You already spilled, right? I'm just making sure. I lost track there. Most of what I was going to talk about has already been covered. That's generally the case when it gets to me. So thank you, Commissioners. I would echo the comments about Harlow Farms.
I would echo the comments about Harlow Farms. Thank you for coming tonight and expressing that. I'm wondering if our City Manager can address that in her comments. And an update for the commission and the community, I served on the Northern Michigan University Presidential Search Committee. We had interviews last week. We have four candidates coming to campus between the September 15th, which I believe is, is that two days from now? It's a couple days from now, anyway, maybe three or four days, through September 22nd. The details, the name and background will be released 24 hours prior to each candidate coming to campus, and there will be public forums for community members to be able to go and listen to the candidate speak and provide feedback to the NMU Board of Trustees. At this point, my role would be maybe to attend those sessions along with others, but I don't sit in on the final round of those interviews, but I was a representative of the commission, the city, and the greater community, serving in that capacity, and I am really excited by the four candidates that we are bringing to campus, so more to come on that. The last thing I wanted to say is that we are back to school successfully. Students are back. I would just ask that folks be careful near schools, be careful when there are school buses around with the flashing lights, make sure you're stopping. You know, our student safety is of the utmost importance, and just kind of keep that at front of mind as we transition back into the school year. City Manager, comments from you?
Sure. I want to address the Harlow Farms questions or comments that have been made. So there, the multi-use pathway has been included in our capital improvement plan, I believe since 2019, and it is, at this point, close to a $500,000 mark with that cost if we look at today's costs and increasing. And at this point, that would come from, a majority of that from the general fund, and we all obviously understand where we stand with our general fund right now, but it continues to be included in here and evaluated every single year as we go forward until we can find an identified funding source. So that is something that we will continue to discuss, and I'll probably provide an update to the commission here at my next email over. I, do you want to mention something about the carts? So it is a process, it is a lengthy process, so if your cart does not show up today, and then you think it's supposed to be showing up today, it won't, it might not, so it will be there by the end of the week. It looks like we will be on track to get that completed by Friday, and continue to, you know, follow those directions and just kind of roll with it for now, right? Pun intended. We are very excited on having this program begin, and we know that there's going to be some growing pains here, and there's going to be some things we are still working out. We are in contact with some of those unique circumstances that need to be addressed or thought out as we go, but we will be planning to get some more information out here as we go with it. If you do have questions, please contact Public Works, and we can work through some of those concerns. Lastly, Community Office Hours, where I have the opportunity to sit with the public for a couple of hours and kind of have a more informal discussion over coffee, is scheduled for September 14th, that is this Wednesday, and that is from 10:00 AM to noon, and that will be at the Peter White Public Library, so please come on in, say hi, let's have a conversation, bring any questions that you have, and we can talk. And that is all, thank you.
Are adjourned at 6:43 PM. Thanks, everyone.